Good evening. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Common Council for Tuesday, April 17th, 2018, to order and recognize that we do have a full quorum of all eight aldermen here this evening. Please rise for the posting of colors.
Detail. Up. Order. Arms. Ready? Cut. Order. Arms. Present. Arms. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is standing today, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order. Arms. Ready? Cut. Order. Arms. March in five. Ready? Step. Deep it. Up. Ready? Doop. Ready? Doop. Ready? Doop. Ready? Doop.
Thank you, gentlemen. Under Agenda Items for Consideration, item number one is an invocation by Pastor Clarissa Martinelli. Pastor, please step up to the mic and welcome tonight. Thanks for coming over. As I mentioned earlier, you certainly look like you're dressed for spring, and I hope you're a premonition of what's coming very shortly.
I very hope so, Mayor. Thank you very much. Good evening and congratulations to the 2018 West Bend City Council. Martin and I have lived in West Bend for nearly two years and are continuously pleasantly surprised to find interesting, fun, and community-engaging activities throughout the city. The locally-owned shops in downtown area, various faith community activities, an over-the-top farmer's market, music on Main, parks and bike trails, the future new life of the old theater, the variety of nonprofits and wheels on Main, in which I will enter my birthday present, a 1937 classic Chevy coupe. However, it's not all a bed of roses. Yes, even in West Bend, we have our challenges, and it can be easy to blame our shortcomings or lack of success on something other than our own actions. While a myriad of things, economy, resources, people, and location certainly impacts on our livelihood, it's not an excuse for failing to do what made West Bend successful in the first place. When your day isn't going right, when the budget isn't balanced, the community project isn't working like it should, who do you hold responsible? Circumstances or people? As our elected West Bend city leaders, we hope that instead of complaining about something that isn't working, you will consciously ask yourself, "What actions can I take to make it better?" It will keep you from the trapped explain in the parable of responsibility, and it goes like this. This is a story about four people named everybody, somebody, anybody, and nobody. There was an important job to be done, and everybody was sure that somebody would do it. Anybody could have done it, but nobody did it. Somebody got angry about that because it was everybody's job. Everybody thought anybody could do it, but nobody realized that everybody wouldn't do it. It ended up that everybody blamed somebody when nobody did what anybody could have. A healthy city council team is one where roles and responsibilities are clear, where goals are shared, so that everybody steps up to the plate when needed and takes responsibility for the outcome. Achievement of having reached a goal is very important. Shared pride is so powerful and energizing and motivating. Leadership requires two virtues that seem very simple until they become very inconvenient: honesty and courage. All of you have earned the right to be here today by winning the trust of the people of West Bend. But along with that honor comes a duty of humility, integrity, and public service. So let's settle our hearts for a moment as we welcome the Holy Trinity to this gathering. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity you have given these men and women to serve the people of our city. Help these chosen leaders to act with character and conviction, to listen with understanding and goodwill, to speak with charity and restraint. Give and continuously renew in each of them a humble spirit of service. Passionately remind them that they are stewards of your authority. Guide them to be the leaders of your people, the leaders your people need, and with keen eyesight to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with them, and to treat all persons with the respect of your greatest creation, humanity, that we deserve. May they always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. As benefactors, give us the patience to give our leaders a chance to govern with grace, compassion, justice, and love. Let us support sincere efforts and celebrate wise compromise. May we never cease to pray and to hope and to work for justice for all. And finally, gracious Savior, renew our city council with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a beloved community worthy of all your creations. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and in your love, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Well done. We appreciate it. Moving along, item number two is administration of the oaths of office for newly-elected alderpersons. Stephanie is going to call the gentlemen down one by one? I guess. Or go ahead. One at a time, Stephanie?
Doesn't matter. Raise your right hand. I, John Butchlick...
I, John Butchlick...
Having been elected...
Having been elected...
...to the office of District One Alderperson...
...to the office of District One Alderperson...
Swear that I will support...
Swear that I will support...
...the Constitution of the United States...
...the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin...
...and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin...
...and will faithfully and impartially...
...and will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
...of said office...
...of said office...
...to the best of my ability...
...to the best of my ability...
...so help me God...
...so help me God...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand. I, Andrew Chevalier...
I, Andrew Chevalier...
Having been elected...
Having been elected...
...to the office of District Three Alderperson...
...to the office of District Three Alderperson...
Swear that I will support...
Swear that I will support...
...the Constitution of the United States...
...the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin...
...and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin...
...and will faithfully and impartially...
...and will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
...of said office...
...of said office...
...to the best of my ability...
...to the best of my ability...
...so help me God...
...so help me God...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand. I, Richard Caston...
I, Richard Caston...
Having been elected...
Having been elected...
...to the office of District Five Alderperson...
...to the office of District Five Alderperson...
Swear that I will support...
Swear that I will support...
...the Constitution of the United States...
...the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin...
...and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin...
...and will faithfully and impartially...
...and will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
...of said office...
...of said office...
...to the best of my ability...
...to the best of my ability...
...so help me God...
...so help me God...
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Raise your right hand. I, Justice Maddel...
I, Justice Maddel...
Having been elected...
Having been elected...
...to the office of District Seven Alderperson...
To the office of District Seven Alderperson...
Swear that I will support...
Swear that I will support...
...the Constitution of the United States...
...the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin...
...and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin...
...and will faithfully and impartially...
...and will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
...of said office...
...of said office...
...to the best of my ability...
...to the best of my ability...
...so help me God...
...so help me God...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Looking forward to serving with all of you. Item number three is a selection of council president. We'll take a motion on the item. Currently, Alderman Hugaster is the council president.
I would make a motion to have Alderman Hugaster retain his title of council president.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Are there none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item four is the mayoral appointment of Alderman Caston and Jenkins to sit on the plan commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number five is appointment of Alderman Chevalier as chairperson for the Board of Public Works.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item six is appointment of Alderperson, Alderman Caston, as chairperson for the Finance Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item seven is a resolution designating the public depositories and authorizing the withdrawal of city money, and we've got a list in our packets, a resolution identifying who those entities are.
Motion to approve the designation of the public depositories.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Anybody have any other public depositories that they'd like to recommend? Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item eight is designation of the official city newspaper, and I believe our one and only choice is the West Bend Daily News or the Washington County Daily News. Okay?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item number nine is appointment of the city comptroller, is and has been Kerry Winklebaugh, our finance director.
Motion to approve that appointment.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item ten is appointments by the city clerk of Amy Ajax and Debbie Guidel to the board of canvassers.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed? That motion carries. And item number eleven is mayoral appointments to various city boards, committees, and commissions. There's a couple of gaps and holes in a few of the positions, but we'll get those filled more likely by the time we meet first week in May.
Do we need to make the motion excluding some of those other names?
We probably should exclude Tony Turner, who I don't believe lives in the state anymore. At least someone else lives in his house. I walk by his house pretty often. And also, the representative on the joint review board from the school district. I don't believe she's in that position anymore.
Okay.
I'm just drawing a blank as to her name. Brittany Altondorf. So we'll be eliminating Tony Turner and Brittany Altondorf from the joint review board, and we'll get another name from the school district, and we'll chase down another citizen representative. So that would be the motion, if anyone is so inclined.
Motion to approve with those changes.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any comments or questions? Are there none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations and thank you to all the folks who are volunteering to our various boards, committees, and commissions. And thanks to our newly-elected aldermen. Congratulations. Get ready to roll up your sleeves, get our hands dirty, and get some good work done. And congrats to everyone else continuing to serve. Let's get to work. Be no further business before the common council adjourn. Are there any announcements tonight? Have a great evening, everyone.